Thank you all for being here. I thank you to all our staff, our council, and our guests for being here. It's 5:30 PM. I'm officially calling this meeting to order. Would you please conduct a roll call?
Mayor Rodham.
President.
Mayor Pro Tim Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Caffey.
Here.
Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Oyveras.
Here.
Councilmember Starnes.
Here.
Councilmember Melton.
Here.
Would you please stand, face the flag, and join me in the pledge, followed by an invocation. Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That sounded beautiful.
Yes, it did. Please remain standing and bow your heads for the prayer. God of creation, you have blessed us with the changing of the seasons. As we welcome the autumn months, may the brilliant colors of the leaves remind us of the wonders of your creation, and may the harvest from the field remind us of the abundance we have been given and the bounty we are to share with others. We pray your blessings on our community for the safety of our first responders, our students, teachers, staff, and administrators with the Rockdale ISD, and Lord for all of our citizens. God our thoughts and our words this evening, that our decisions and actions will be pleasing in your sight. We thank you for your goodness and your faithfulness to us. We pray these things for the honor of your kingdom. Amen. Tim, can we move up the presentation in front of Citizens Communication?
Yes, well...
Is there anybody signed up for Citizens?
We have one.
Okay.
Yes, you can.
Okay. Is it an agenda item or off agenda item?
Uh, not.
Not an agenda item. Okay. We're gonna hold off, Ms. Hill House, if you don't mind, we're gonna do a recognition of the Rockdale ISD Special Olympics Groups, Group. I tell you, when I was watching their progress and what they were doing in their competitions, and the awards they were winning, and the time and the effort preparing, that their families were putting in, that their teachers were putting in, and most important, these young athletes, and the accomplishments that they were able to achieve. As mayor, I'm so proud of them. I'm so proud for the families, and I know I can safely speak for all of council. So, I wanted to, we wanted to recognize them tonight, and I have a list of names. And I'm going to read the names of the student athletes. Aiden Leib, and we'll hold for a round of applause at the end after I read all the names, please. Dakota Davis, Brody Thompson, Louis Weller, Jalen Dels, Ethan Sovedra, David Ramirez, Chase Phillips, Kate Pittman, Joshua Walker, Jaden Farr, and Justin Cruz. Council, would you please stand and give... Did we miss anybody? Did I miss anybody? I think I have a pretty...
Jalen Dels.
I'm sorry?
Jalen Dels.
Jalen? I said, yes, I mentioned Jalen, absolutely. Stand and give, crowd, please stand and give these young athletes. It's a great day to be a Rockdale Tiger, right? Thank y'all. Congratulations.
Congratulations, y'all.
Can we get a picture?
Maybe invite them out here like we usually do?
Yes. Right up here. Councilmembers, let y'all and the mayor take a picture. How are you? You got them all? You're ready?
Okay, y'all, look right here, real quick, ready, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, parents, y'all, what about yours?
One more time. And thank you to the hardworking teachers and coaches.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, Louis, you're welcome. Y'all take care.
Thank y'all.
Ms. Hill House, thank you for your patience and your understanding. I certainly appreciated you. You're welcome to take the microphone for your allotted three minutes.
Sets the mood. I think it's pulling off or something.
I've never seen them.
Go ahead, Ms. Hill House.
What I have to say is for our elected people, you six people, and the mayor. This is from the charter, oh, thanks, Ben. The next to the last paragraph in the charter calls for a charter review. The council shall review the charter every five years to determine if any amendment should be considered. The mayor shall appoint a charter review commission consisting of a minimum of four qualified voters of the city, not less often than every fifth year. The term of each charter review commission shall be six months, and such examination or commission shall review, hold hearings upon, and make recommendations for the amendment, if any, of this charter. Any resulting charter elections shall be noticed and held in compliance with state law. As far as I know, the last time we had a charter review was 2019. At that time, there was at least one change made, which I liked, because it said that a councilperson could be on a board. And since I'd already been on the library board, I was glad that I could stay on it. I think this is something that we do need to do, and no, I'm not asking for a job by any means, but I think that you should at least look at it, think about it. And one of the recommendations that I would make is that you six people have the authority, or take the authority, to approve department head hirings, firings, and demotions. That can be very important. It's important to the community. It's a small town. Everybody knows, well, not everybody knows everybody, but a lot of people do. And so, being a small southern town, it would be to your advantage, I think, to actually do that. Anyway, that's what I had to say. Thank you for your...
Thank you for that, and we have appointed that committee to do that charter review this year.
You have?
Yes, ma'am. We did that approximately two meetings ago.
Was it on the agenda?
No, I think it was, I can't recall if it was on the agenda. Tim?
No, the city attorney indicated that that was your prerogative to appoint the members of the charter review.
We did appoint, yes, ma'am.
Good, okay, because I didn't sit on an agenda, but good. I'm glad you did.
Yes, ma'am.
Very good.
Pretty recent.
But I would recommend that somebody think about what I said about that, too.
Sure, certainly, absolutely.
And I'm sorry, I have to run. Thank you.
Thank you, Belinda.
Appreciate you coming to speak. No one else on Citizens Communications. Moving on to presentations. Well, I have the honor of recognizing two of our hardworking employees. Certificates of appreciation, two of our employees, Mr. Derek Redstein, for outstanding service to the city of Rockdale for the Water and Wastewater Apprentice Training Program. Derek?
Hello, Derek.
And one more?
Mayor, I'm sorry, we have a representative of the Texas Rural Water Association here now.
That's even better.
Oh, wow!
That's even better.
And she's gonna tell you a little bit about the program and what this recognition is for.
Perfect, good deal. Thank you. Yes, absolutely. Let me make my other recognition first before you do. The other certificate of appreciation goes to Mr. James Sanders. Congratulations, James, again, for outstanding service to the city of Rockdale for the Water and Wastewater Apprentice Program. Yes, ma'am.
Well, good evening, councilmembers, mayor, city manager. It's been my privilege to work along Gerald. I'm the manager of the apprenticeship program for Texas Rural Water Association. And so, Rockdale has been a part of the program coming up a couple of years now. So, we're about to see James graduate, hopefully, in January, which I'll come again and recognize him there. But our apprenticeship program is for water and wastewater operators. It is a little more structured program that they go through. They go through a lot of related technical instruction, on-the-job training, and it is through the Department of Labor. So, they will receive a certificate from the Department of Labor. And so, it is a privilege to have Rockdale a participating employer with that program. So, one of the reasons I came out today is the EPA issued a grant that our national association was able to partake in, and we wanted to recognize the hard work of our apprentices. And so, they have been given a $5,000 stipend each through the EPA. So, I do have a large check, so I can get a picture with y'all, but I will save it from, so we can get a picture. And that goes directly to them, just saying that we know that they're getting recognized for their participation. Also, Gerald, as a mentor, and then Josh Smith as a mentor, they each get $2,500 through the EPA for training and showing them the ropes in the system and getting them licensed. Anything else I should add, Gerald?
No, I just wanted to add that the program we joined was about three years ago.
Yes.
And these guys have worked very hard. The EPA grant was not known about at this time. That only found, we found out about three weeks ago, that that money was available, and Jacqueline got with us and said, it's the first come, first served. If you want to put your name in the hat, you might get it. And thanks to Jacqueline, we're gonna be able to get that fund.
I don't have those funds on hand yet, but they are coming. That's why we have this as a substitute. But yes, it is fully through the EPA, just in recognition of apprentices and mentors inside of the federal funding for the program.
All right, that's awesome.
Can I get a picture with you up there?
Yeah, we'd like to.
Yes. I may not get a picture with the check. I kind of left a blank for each one if you don't want to. I mean, I have a...
I'd like to know when Derek gets his money, so he can borrow a little bit.
Congratulations. I wish your dad was here, Derek.
So, would you know what?
I'm proud of y'all. Thank you.
Why don't y'all stand at the center here? Now, split the TV. Will that herd get in the middle, if that's okay?
What you need, what can we color? Dry race? These are, these are...
I have a Sharpie.
She, you got a dry race over there?
In my office, I do. Oh, it's not a big deal. It only shows 500 on here.
Oh, maybe, yeah.
We'll just do that.
Oh, okay, we can do that.
Get a blue, get a blue one that's added on there.
I have a... No, you don't need to apologize. She, can you get that dry race? Yeah, it'll be worth it. That's $5,000. It's a big difference, 500 to 5,000. Are you sure?
Wait, let's get it right.
Yeah, we got a few seconds. Thank you, Mayor. It's a big deal.
This is too important not to get it. If we don't get a picture, she can renege on it.
There you go. There you go. Am I only giving 500 instead of the 5,000?
It was quite a shock when we got that email, because it's through the National Rural Water Association and the EPA, and...
And they released it very quickly.
And Jacqueline's been very big help for these guys, getting into this program. Hope it is, we pay $4,000 upfront, and then all the classes she schedules them, which will maybe let us know when they need to go, where they need to go, and then they go, and then take the test, then the class.
Well, I love everything about it. You know, water is the foundation of civilization and society.
Do you want a wet towel?
I don't think you're gonna be able to read it from back here.
Okay.
I'm glad that they recognize how important it is.
Okay. We'll kind of, we'll smudge that out when I submit these pictures.
Photoshop will do a lot.
Okay. I'm sorry to take your time like this.
Y'all squeeze in, council. Come on, y'all, come on, please. Please, council, goodness.
Awesome.
All right, good deal.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jacqueline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
So, we had also to, Tim, you want to address item number two on the presentations?
Yes, the East Belt Tap House Hot Fund Presentation. I'm asking council to table that. We have not yet, that event was just a week and a half ago, and they have not yet turned in their report. I thought they might, but they haven't, so we'll push that till the next meeting, if that's all right with council.
Does that require a motion to table?
No, sir.
No? Counsel, any objections? Okay, moving down to the consent agenda. Counsel, you've had opportunity to review your packets, review the items in the consent agenda. Is there anything that council wishes to pull out of the consent agenda for further discussion? Being done, I'll entertain action on the consent agenda as written.
I'll make a motion. We accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Ain't no discussion, we'll vote. All in favor, said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Moving to the regular agenda, item eight, consider and take any necessary action on a resolution for the Rockdale Chamber Commerce Christmas Parade. Ben?
Yes, and Lucita is here tonight. This is, our Christmas parade is coming up here pretty soon, and we're actually partnering with the Chamber, so it's gonna be a city chamber event. And we are submitting a request for the closure of the highway, excuse me, of Mylum, which is a state highway, for more than...
Maine.
I'm sorry?
Maine.
I'm sorry, Maine, Main Street, excuse me, next to Wolf Park, for the festival itself. We won't, we don't need to request the closure for the parade because of the duration is shorter than they require this process. But they do require a resolution of council for the closure.
Lucita, was there anything you wanted to say?
I'm just here in case you guys have questions.
Okay.
I'd like to make a friendly recommendation. The parade was great last year. We were in it as well. I think we won an award, too.
I think you did.
But go out, you know, really knock on the doors. Maybe y'all did that last year, a lot of people, and just try to get as many people you can. I don't know if the band can be in it, football team, girls' basketball, just try to get as many people in as you can. Because I think I still hear some people go, I don't know how to get into it, even though you put it on Facebook and everything. But maybe knock on doors or something.
Yeah, this year, we have a list of businesses that we want to actually put flyers in physically. But if you guys have any recommendations for businesses that I might have forgotten about, that get a lot of foot traffic, please let me know. Send me an email. I'll have it to press.
And if I can just echo what Councilman Caffey's saying, I know, for example, last weekend for the fair parade, somebody had made a comment, oh, we missed the band. I think everybody loves Rockdale Band, and I believe they're at competition. But I know it's not a business, but we can just continue to nurture just those relationships with the school district, and everybody loves the band and all the athletes. Yeah, if you could contact them, too, and get them involved, that'd be great.
Actually, we contacted them, like, over the summer.
Oh, so they're set. Well, that's all you need. Anything Christmas is a yes for me, so...
Do we have flyers or anything that we can pass out to, I mean, I know you said you're getting with businesses and things like that. Do you have flyers or any sort of, like...
I do have flyers. I do have them all at the Chamber, but I can definitely drop some off to you guys, and you guys are welcome to help me distribute.
Yeah, we're happy to.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And on that flyer, it tells them how to be involved, or is it just let them know that it's going on?
It's more of an advertisement for the parade. There's a QR code that has, like, all of the information about lineup and times and expectations and stuff like that.
Okay. And we may have already said this, but will this be advertised on our local radio station as well? Okay, excellent. Counsel, any other questions or comments? I'll entertain action.
I'm excited.
Make a motion that we approve the resolution for item number eight.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second on the floor for a regular agenda, item number eight. Is there any discussion? Ain't no discussion, we'll vote. All in favor, said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Agenda, item number nine, discussion? Do you have something?
No, no, I was just saying, thank you, in case you needed it.
Discussion regarding a potential ordinance regulating chickens, roosters, and other fowl within the city of Rockdale. Tim?
So, actually, Mayor Rodham had reached out to me about three or four weeks ago about wanting to get this on the agenda, and I talked with Barbara, BBW, and there's a lot of directions we can go with this. He had, he specifically, I think, you mentioned roosters in particular. And looking at the city's code in regard to chickens and roosters, and that, the only regulation that we have is that they're prohibited from roaming free on city streets and on others, some other people's property. So, you have to maintain them on your property. Sometimes it doesn't happen, but regardless, that's the only regulation that we have. You know, the state legislature has said that we can't make them illegal. In other words, we have to allow chickens to be able to be kept in the city, but we can regulate them within certain parameters. Veronica is here from BBW's office, and so, she can kind of speak to some of the limitations on what regulations we can enforce. But we can, I believe we can restrict roosters, so that you can't have roosters, because the crow are a nuisance in that regard. There's other restrictions you can have in regard to maybe how many or how, where they can be located on a property, how far from an adjacent property, things like that, and how they're maintained, so... But I did, before we actually wrote an ordinance and recommended something to council, I did want to get feedback from council on what y'all felt was important to include in that ordinance.
So, usually, when something comes to us, there's something driving it. Is, what, is anybody willing to speak up, say, what's driving this one? Is it primarily the noise of roosters? I will. I'll speak up.
I'll speak about it, too.
It's the noise of roosters and the complaints that I'm receiving from citizens who have neighbors with roosters that live in their neighborhood, and quite frankly, they're tired of hearing the rooster's crow. It's disturbing, according to those citizens.
Okay, I'll share. I personally called, I live on the east side, and there's a lot of residents that have chickens, and I respect that's part of our small-town culture. However, I believe, how would I say this? There's not a lot of consequences for those citizens that choose to have chickens and don't maintain them in their area. So, if you go down Belton and Rice, there's chickens everywhere, and on your property, on your, you know, and then there's, you'll find dead chickens, covered in maggots, and whose responsibility is that to clean it up? So, I know I've had that issue in that area of town. I don't know if anybody else can speak to that, but I've had to call animal control several times, and there's just, doesn't seem like there's a lot of consequences for those citizens that don't follow the guidance that we have. So, if we could do something different, that would be great.
I agree. I think that, you know, it's, it is probably primary small towns, but I know a lot of people do have chickens, and they want to raise their own eggs. I have no problem with that. But I think they need to be confined in a, you know, on their own property, and definitely no rooster. Yeah, because if you're, some people work nights and try to sleep during the day or what have you, and they get up too early, then there's be something type of regulation, but still able to have chickens, yes.
Is there, has y'all's office written this for somebody else, or are we...
With the guinea pigs.
We blazing a trail here.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Veronica Rivera, Assistant City Attorney with the Knight Law Firm. Yes, we have, actually Barbara has done extensive research on this, and we, she and I visited... Uh, yes, we have, actually Barbara has done um, extensive research on this and uh, we, she and I visited on, on this ordinance. And uh, again, we're just seeking um, guidance from y'all because there are various ordinances, so no, you're not uh, out on your own. Uh, you cannot regulate hens because the state legislature has said, yes, that, you know, anyone is allowed to have hens, more likely for the laying of eggs. Um, but you can regulate distances, the numbers, um, and we looked at the, or Barbara did, looked at the um, agricultural code to make sure about roosters and you can, you can definitely uh, regulate roosters whether you want them uh, it, within the city or not, or distances as well. So distances from a certain business or distances from schools, anything that um, would affect health and sanitation.
So when you say you can't regulate hens, do you mean you can't prohibit hens?
You can't prohibit them.
Regulations regarding hens?
Right, correct. Yes, you can't prohibit hens, you can prohibit roosters.
I, I did a little research on this and this is no longer a small town issue. Austin has regulations, San Antonio has regulations. They're all really geared toward chicken friendly, from the ones I read, that, you know, you have more and more people getting these. So it's not a small town issue anymore.
Correct.
Oh, well, I, I guess the, in, in my opinion, I'm not a chicken raiser or a rooster raiser, but um, the roosters are an easy one to me. Um, if, if you're looking for guidance from us, um, let me tear me up on Facebook, but that's okay. Uh, my suggestion is, let's deal with the roosters.
Okay.
And let's deal with the captivity of them, of all of them first. Because what I don't want to do is put this, something in, in, in place that now the police department is now chicken wranglers.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Spending all their time chasing chickens instead of criminals. Um.
Sure.
And so I would, I would say, let's work towards something like that and see if it kind of self-corrects. And if it doesn't, then we amend it again and start putting more enforcement, more regulations into it if people aren't gonna be um, responsible with their chickens.
Mm-hmm. And if I could add to, other than being a nuisance, I know I've had the roosters in my yard that come that will like run after me and my kids, so I also believe it's a safety issue. Aside from being an absolute nuisance, it's a safety issue, so hopefully our citizens can understand that it's not just, oh, because we're being, you know, sensitive. It's a safety issue.
In the research of any of these other towns, how did they, like, is the rooster, is there a grandfathering or is there a point in time that this has passed and you gotta get rid of your rooster?
We'd need to look at that on whether there is any type of grandfathering. I would think not, especially if we're talking about if you're talking about health and safety, there is no grandfathering. If there is just something else on it, uh, we'd have to look to see if, if grandfathering would uh, apply or not. So that is something that we can certainly look into.
Yeah, I hate to harp on this, but because I dealt with it personally, I know that currently we have some guidance as far as fencing, as how tall your fence has to be in the perimeter, but even still, we might have, can we raise that? 'Cause the chickens fly over my huge privacy fence. I don't live there now, but um, maybe we need to look at that. What's the max height that these people have to have? 'Cause they fly over the current privacy fence.
Okay.
I don't know. Not to harp on it, but just to offer some personal experience with what I've had to deal, deal with.
So would y'all be okay with an ordinance that number one, prohibited roosters, and two, um, required that hens be kept in a, in a coop or in a pen inside of somebody's yard?
Things have to be combined in their yard.
I think that's what they have right now.
They can't be cooped all day though.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's what we have right now, something similar. I don't know if Ben can speak to it. I think I might have called him about it.
They could, they can roam in some, inside somebody's yard as long as they're, they stay inside the fence.
And I think, I don't know if you can give, uh, Mayor give Ben an opportunity to speak about it, 'cause I know he looked into it whenever I called. 'Cause we have some ordinance already kind of saying what you're saying.
We do regarding them having, uh, because I had Ben go do an investigation on a neighbor that complained about fowl.
And I forwarded it on animal control.
Can you remind us what we currently have in place?
Right. What we have in place from my memory, uh, it's not something that I um, enforce. It's an animal control function, but there is a distance between the coop and households of fifty foot. That's a requirement as well as with the neighboring property. And then they're required to keep them on their own land.
Right.
Right.
So if they do hop the fence, then they're, then they can be uh, in trouble.
Right, and that's the issues I was having when animal control would come and then they would try to come wrangle them like you're saying. And it was just a lot of time, but there was no consequences for the chicken owner or what have you, so they, they're just constantly.
We can look at the fine structure potentially, the penalties for not maintaining them in your yard.
Penalty. I mean, not that we want to like penalize people, but something to encourage them. That's what my mom said. Comes over here, we have chicken soup. Something to encourage them to keep their chickens on their property.
And so I, I think the ones that are, that are flying over fences are the free range, that nobody's clipped their wings to keep them. They're just roaming chickens that have the ability to fly, 'cause cooped chickens uh, that have their wings clipped aren't, don't have the capability of, of flying over.
Uh, they're wild.
Uh, privacy fences, so.
Counsel, any other comments uh, in regard to this discussion?
Do we need to, to do anything with this right now or?
No, it's just for discussion and as long as you think you have enough information.
Yeah, we have enough information and it's just for discussion purposes, so you've provided direction. Um, the only other thing that I would ask is uh, the timing of it. How long um, do you want to give us to provide you an ordinance back for y'all's consideration?
Why don't you, why don't you tell us what's reasonable and you don't have to do it right through the second?
It could either be at the next meeting or the following.
I, I would like some consideration to be given to this fifty foot rule, 'cause there are people on the east side of how, of town who have small yards that they couldn't even have, I, we used to have chickens and I don't think, uh, where they were, even though they were the backside of the yard, I don't think we have fifty feet between then and the house.
No, I agree with you. Uh, I saw that too, but I was thinking, are we just gonna do the, the roosters and then they confined on their own property? Is that correct?
Start with that.
That's starting, 'cause yeah, I'm with you. Our, our neighbors have some, there's no way they'd be that close though. Or they'd be, they would be that close, yes.
Okay. We'll take a look at that as well.
Any questions for counsel before we?
Do we, while we're doing this, do we put a quantity on there?
Jill, Juan is to provide some guidance on quantities that we've seen.
I'd like some, some recommendation from you for us to consider.
You have guidance from other municipalities and we definitely want to come up with the best practice.
Is there any fowl that's not allowed?
What?
Any fowl that's not allowed?
Uh, that's a Ben question. I'm sorry, I don't know.
Apparently it is. The only regulations we have regarding chickens and fowl is that they have to remain handed on your property.
Okay, any kind of?
Bird. Right.
Peacock.
Okay.
And he, I mean, it doesn't reference, it just referenced hen, chickens and fowl collectively.
Counsel, any further discussion? I'm sorry.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this up, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I've received so many phone calls and messages, I thought it was time to give counsel an opportunity to discuss this. Moving on to agenda item number ten, consider taking any necessary action on a resolution awarding a contract for grant administration for the General Land Office MIT Resilient Communities Program Grant of 2025. Oh, Ben?
Mayor and counsel, uh, this is one of the rare moments where you can apply for a grant and not pay any money for it. Uh, so this is a grant that I referenced six months ago, maybe two a year ago. The intent of this is to use this funding, if awarded, for a zoning ordinance rewrite. You spend all of that money on a comprehensive plan. Now the next step is to start updating your zoning ordinance. We're due for a major rewrite. We can always piecemeal it if we need to, but we're gonna at least attempt to get some funding to do an overall rewrite and clean that ordinance up. So what we've done is we've gone out for a request for proposal. We reached out to several different grant administrators. We received six bids for this. Only three of them qualify in the bid threshold. Three of them incorrectly bid, so they were having to be essentially thrown out. I've listed them on that page for the reason they don't meet those requirements. The other three bids are the exact same. How it will break down is two hundred and sixty-seven thousand of those dollars, or the three hundred thousand dollar total will go towards that zoning ordinance rewrite and thirty-three thousand dollars goes to grant administration services.
And the dollar amount of that grant administration is set by the program. That's why they all have the same amount, 'cause.
That's right. That's the max amount of money that you can get as well for it. Uh, we did scoring on it. We've called references. The highest score went to Langford with the score of ninety-eight, which is what we're recommending to award that contract to. Um, Harper-Doss came in second at ninety-five and Grant Works came in in third at eighty-five.
Let me ask a question. We use Langford a lot. Um, are we putting, if we do it again, which I'm not opposed to it, are we putting all of our eggs in one basket and people are gonna say, why do I bid anything to the city of Rockdale? Langford's got that sewed up. That would be, it happens in the construction world. Uh, I don't know why it wouldn't happen in the grant writing world or municipality world.
It is not uncommon that a city, you know, ha, and the same thing happens oftentimes with engineering or with grant writing, um, professional services in general. Um, then, because you know the people and you trust them and if they do a good job for you. If they don't, then you end up scoring them lower the next time and.
Okay.
So I don't think, I don't think it will, it will hurt. Generally, the proposals that they submit are very, the same, basically the same proposal they submit. Uh, they, they don't put a lot of time into preparing proposals generally like you would putting a bid together on a project.
Is that number three a typo? They really bid thirty million dollars on that?
No, they really did. It was way off. Um, I think on that bid, it was everything except what we asked for. Because what the bid document had is other um, CDPG grants to go for. We specifically listed the one we wanted to go for and the three that bid incorrectly did not bid for the one we were going for. So that thirty million is actually what it is.
Counsel, any other questions for Ben regarding this agenda item?
So you need a recommend, I mean, a?
Need to take action on this if you so choose to. I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation for Langford Community Management Services and award them this contract. A motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Be no discussion, we'll vote. All in favor said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Agenda item number eleven. Consider taking any necessary action on, on awarding the bid for the East Cameron Lift Station. Gerald?
Good afternoon again. The East Cameron Lift Station has started out as a, a city uh, public works project. Uh, about four years ago, the design and all the work was done for it and then because of the cost of it was, uh, dropped. Uh, ultimately, the MDD uh, came back and applied for a CDPG grant to uh, do this work and it was approved for the MDD. And we currently have um, sent this out for bid. The, the money that I understand is available is four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars and the low bid was four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, uh, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. And there were six bids. You saw, you can see it in your packet if you have any questions. I have Alan Phillips with KSA here today to answer any questions that you might have about the um, construction or the bidding process.
Now I would just add to what Gerald just talked about. This is actually the second time we've gone out for bids. We went out for bids about six, eight weeks ago, um, and we got one bid that was um, about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, something like that. Well over the budget that we had. Um, we met with Free, uh, with uh, KSA and um, reviewed that. They came up with some ideas and alternatives to ensure more participation and so as a result of that, we did get a number, I think we got four, four bids? Six bids?
Six.
We had six bids and they were a lot more competitive. There were some that were really high again. I mean, one that was as high as, what, nine million, nine, nine hundred thousand?
Nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred fifty-three thousand, but we did get a couple that were, that were down low. Um, and checked the references for this contract. We've never, we're not familiar with this contractor, but um, KSA checked the references. There were two projects that they did similarly and uh, those two um, cities came, had nothing but good things to say about this contractor, so.
So the first time y'all bid it, uh, only had one proposal turned in. From that time to the second time, did we change the scope of work at all?
No, what we did was we spec'd a uh, pre, pre-built uh, uh, lift station. All parts is uh, set in place instead of uh, form and pour and Alan, you might want to explain that.
We pre-qualified that piece of equipment. The part of the problem was that there was a um, buy American, build, build American requirement that people were having a, a challenge complying with, so we pre-qualified some um, subcontractors for that particular equipment and provided that information.
It's called BABA and that caused us some problems.
Um, and provided that in the spec. So that, but there was no really change to the overall scope of the project. And this project is, there is a fifty thousand dollar match uh, for this grant, um, that's being provided by MDD, but this, this does go over that, uh, the project total amount by?
Almost fifty-two thousand, fifty-one thousand.
About fifty-two thousand that we're gonna have to come up with. Um, so, and I did reach out to Nathan Bland with the MDD and I will be asking them to participate since they had actually had applied for the funding and got for the project. This was originally, I think, intended to serve the um, when they applied for it, to serve their new industrial park on the west side, which they've kind of abandoned at this point.
That was my next question. Is this still needed now that they're not developing on the east, southeast corner of seventy-seven, seventy-nine?
It is not as critical, um, but Gerald will probably tell you that.
Yeah, let me, let me answer that.
The lift station itself is very old and.
The lift station we have there is in horrible condition and it will cost us several hundred thousand dollars of the city's money to get it built and fixed and up to its stat. This way we can do it for another fifty-one thousand dollars if MDD doesn't pay for it.
Having a brand new lift station.
And have a brand new lift station.
And it's also gonna be upsized.
It is significantly.
Still paying for it, right? Seventy-something thousand.
I believe our, our pay part, part out of our city budget is seventy thousand dollars.
This is through a grant.
The CDPG grant, yes.
The loc, the local share originally of the project that we submitted was fifty thousand dollars, which the MDD was providing. The bids came in higher than what we submitted in the application, um, so we would have to cover an additional fifty-two thousand.
From four forty-eight to um, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine forty-two.
And being that the park, industrial park has not been developed, may or may not be developed, is the MDD still on board to provide that money?
I believe they're under contract, 'cause if we didn't, here's the thing, if we did not decide to proceed and we tell who's the agency, that this came from the Department of Agriculture and say, never mind, we're not doing it anymore. MDD is gonna have a tough time getting grants from Department of Agriculture ever again for the next ten years.
We don't want to create that, I don't want to create that condition.
I, I don't either, but if the MDD says, well, we no longer need this, uh, no, we're not contributing fifty thousand dollars plus another fifty that we're fixing to go ask them for, a hundred thousand dollars.
So, and, and I believe they're contractually obligated to, to do that, to provide the fifty thousand dollars, not the extra fifty-two.
So if they say, thanks, but no thanks, then we're, we're gonna, we need to cough up fifty-two thousand.
We would have to come up with fifty-two thousand dollars to have it.
Right. And so what are you after tonight? I don't see how, how we say, yeah, go forward when we don't know how we're paying for it and, and for sure that the MDD's on board.
Well, tonight, what we're, all we'll, we'll be looking for is a notice of award. You're recognizing the low bidder and, and then we can start moving forward to contracts and, and all that and making sure that the MDD's on board and figure out if they're gonna provide the extra fifty-two thousand. and making sure that the MDD's on board and figure out if they're gonna provide the extra fifty-two thousand dollars or if we're gonna have to do that and then we'll have to make that determination. But you wouldn't be obligated on, for anything tonight, after tonight, other than to move forward and it will come back to you.
So this will come back again for final approval?
Yes.
Gerald, didn't, I mean, what's there has to be, I mean, something's gotta be fixed though, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's falling apart. I mean, and I give you a number, a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand, somewhere in that neighborhood, but that's just a little bit on my part.
Then we would be on the hook for all of that.
Yes, exactly.
I'm, I'm a hundred percent understanding that. If the MDD tells you, "No, you got somewhere, you can come up with fifty-two thousand dollars"?
We're working on it.
Can we just table it until we hear back from the end of the day?
How can we?
Is it urgent? Can we wait?
How soon do we have to make the notice of award?
I don't wanna leave this contractor hanging, but at the same time, I don't wanna lead him on if we don't have a way to pay for it.
Okay, so we could push this off until November?
Yeah, can we just table?
Make a recommendation that we table this until November and we have that, that issue.
I'll entertain that motion. I'll make a motion that we table Agenda Item Number Eleven until next month's meeting with some clarification on funding. A motion and a second on the floor to table Agenda Item Number Eleven. Is there any discussion? If no discussion, a vote, all in favor said motion signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Twelve, consider taking any necessary action on a change order for the contract for the downtown sidewalk project. Gerald?
This, majority of this work is already done and we had to make some changes based on some of the things that we found in the location and ADA compliance. And Tyler Campbell is here with KSA and I'd like him to give you some information about all the different changes that were made.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. So it's just a lot of...
Thank you.
For the people online.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So yeah, the changes are just kind of several little miscellaneous things. So most of it, as you guys probably are aware from previous meetings, so this project improves sidewalks along Bell, the south side from Burleson to Main, both sides, from Main to Ackerman in front of the Tap House in that downtown corridor and then a little bit kind of up to the post office on Green Street and then on the north side of Mylum from Main to Green Street down there. So Mylum has already been completed. The north side of Bell has now been completed. So the change order, it, it does two things. So we were trying to look at, because the project budget is capped and we were trying, we're basically trying to maximize. I, this project, you know, these grants are capped by maximum funds and so we're trying to make sure we can complete all the work. So we took out a little bit of scope where we found that some sidewalks, mainly on the south side of Bell from Ackerman to that post office in between Green, was already ADA compliant. The ramps are already ADA compliant, so we kind of took that scope out. We also found we were originally gonna demo out all the concrete down there from, on the south side of Bell from Main to Ackerman. And we found we don't have right-of-way, so we're gonna take out some of that demo and just work from basically the road back to the sidewalk and installing conduit, so we get a little bit of money back there. And then we also found there was a fiber optic line, so we are gonna have to push, we're gonna have to demo a little bit of curbs. That's an additional cost on the south side to kind of push the sidewalk so it works and get it to all fit within the right-of-way because there's some power poles down there. So it's just a bunch of little miscellaneous things. Ultimately, kind of bottom line, the net increase to the contract is seventeen thousand dollars. But the good news is this project, it was bid under budget, well under budget. So regardless, the city's match, which they committed seventy-five thousand funded by the EDC, won't increase because the total project budget was four hundred and fifty-five thousand for construction when you take the grant funds of three hundred and fifty-five thousand and then the, or sorry, it's three hundred and seventy-five thousand for grant funds and then the seventy-five K for match. I might have those. My math is tired. I'm three hundred and eighty thousand for construction from the grant and seventy-five thousand match. Right now, we're at about, with this change order, we're at about four hundred and thirty-three thousand. So we still have about fourteen thousand dollars left over after this change order of money to spend before we hit the budget.
Does this change order require going back and demoing anything that's already been done in this new sidewalk? We're not gonna have to tear up stuff we've already...
Nothing that we've already done, no, no, sir. This is all new, the, pretty much the stuff that hasn't been done, but stuff we found to get it all to work out.
On Main Street, this question may be too late. On Main Street, south of Cameron, we have a lot of trip and fall hazards currently. Are those being addressed in how it's been designed moving forward?
On Main Street, south of?
Cameron Avenue, where Corona's down to Moon Brew, those businesses there, there's, you kind of have to take a step up and then you have to take a big step up and I've seen people fall.
I believe that's part of the textile sidewalk project.
The textile, the textile is working on a project and they're gonna be letting that in January improve those sidewalks between Mylum and Bell, all the way along both sides of, of...
Well, that'll be a question I have for that project.
Hold that question. Councilman Melton?
This is change order number three. I don't see, what, where was, what were one and two? Were they add the, added change order?
All of them have been a little add. So the bid was extremely low. The low bid came in about a hundred thousand dollars under budget, which was actually good because we wanted some contingencies. These downtown areas, there's a lot that are kind of unknown, so they were add. So bid, the first one was for the lighting to kind of, we didn't know when we were designing the project that we'd even be able to fit in the lighting because I was always, from the get-go, when I saw the scope of work and the budget, I was wary that we'd be able to, you know, complete all of that work within the budget, just knowing how much concrete costs and what's all involved. So I, so we kind of, we broke out bid lots and our, we kind of didn't expect to do the lights. And then once we saw the bid came in low, it was a pleasant surprise, but in order to do the lights, we got direction from Gerald that they needed to be according to Encore's spec and so we revised some of the specs. So the contractor rebid the conduit portion to get, not rebid, they did not rebid. They provided a new kind of increase in price from that detail. So that was most of that cost. And then change order two was similar to this change order, just a few different things. I'm trying to remember. I have in my notes.
Long story short, you're doing the accounting to make sure that we're getting credits for what work is not happening. It's not a one-way street for adds only.
Exactly, yes. So these change orders has add, deduct. They kind of go back and forth. They usually result in the net increase. But yeah, there's adds and deducts based on, hey, you know, we can save money here, you know, we need to do this change order, but hey, we can take this out to save money. Yes, because I'm trying to basically maximize all of work within the budget that we have for the grants.
That's listed on the first page, that the adds and deducts are all listed there, changes to existing line items. There's basically one, two, three...
Yeah, that's on this one. I was, I was making reference.
On the previous ones?
One and two, that I, I, if I've, if we've seen them, I don't remember seeing them. I'm just making sure. I play this game for a living. So I know how it works, so make sure that we're doing our homework and we're getting the credits back that we deserve when scopes of work change to the positive for them.
Yes, and that was actually a big, that's kind of what this is, yes, we're definitely playing the game to, yeah, maximize the, the credits to get, yeah, make it a net positive for the city too.
Counsel, any other questions on this agenda item?
Are we done at this point? Does this, does this get us to the end? Are we gonna see a number four?
I believe, I mean, you know, you can't quote anything, but I have been out there extensively. I was out there every day with the contractor. We've walked the site. We've kind of seen all the problems, so we, you know, you hope it's done. We think it'll be done. It should be done. You know, we've kind of foreseen every other issue that could come up, you know, utility-wise, the, you know, weren't marked in the eight-one-one, things like that. So we believe so. So timing-wise, we have to order, there's a little bit of handrail we're gonna add in front of the Tap House just because it's super, there's a little bit of a drop-off there to get it to work for ADA and so we want to keep it safe for everyone. That has a long lead time, so we are gonna wait on that. But I would say, just talking with the contractor, it's probably about, once they remobilize, about a month until it finishes. We're, I'd say we're looking at probably completing this project, just, you know, conservatively, probably early next year by February at the latest.
I would ask that you continue to manage this in a very hands-on manner where you do the least disruption to our downtown city businesses.
Yes, sir.
Please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel, I'll entertain action on this agenda item.
Make a motion that we approve change order number three for seventeen thousand, three hundred and six dollars and sixty cents, I believe. Yes.
A motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? If no discussion, a vote, all in favor said motion signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Agenda item thirteen, consider taking any necessary action on the change order for the contract to rehabilitate the wastewater treatment plant. Gerald?
When we had this out for bid, we did not initially go out and ask for bids. And when we did, there was a delay in getting it to council. Right off the top of my head, I can't remember why.
Because of waiting for TWDB?
That's right, waiting for Texas Water Development Board. And so the contractor agreed to hold his quote for longer than the normal contractual time that they would do that. And between the time that they put the bid in and the time we awarded it was when the tariffs were added into manufacturing. So they came back and, and requested a fifty thousand dollar change order to take care of tariffs and other costs that had gone up in the time between when they gave us the quote and the time that we awarded it. And we have sat down with them, again, Alan with KSA, negotiated with them and discussed it with them and we were able to come to an agreement that we felt was fair to both the city and to the contractor for thirty thousand dollar additional cost. And then the seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five was, is the result of hidden objects in the wastewater treatment plant underground, primarily from the original wastewater treatment plant that was there. Twelve-inch pipe filled with concrete that nobody knew was there, had to be removed and worked around to, to dig the hole for our, a new digester. So that's what this, this was for.
They originally, when they came, this project, we had to wait, once we opened bids, we had to wait almost seventy-five days, probably, maybe even ninety days to get approval from Texas Water Development Board to even bring it to council for a notice of award. And that was, that created quite a bit of delay. And then we weren't actually able to bring it to y'all until January. I think we had opened bids in probably early October, maybe?
I believe it bid late November and then, yeah, there was a, maybe a ninety-day delay just for...
From Texas Water Development Board. So right away, they came, right away, they came to us and said, and asked for fifty thousand dollars in change order because their prices had gone up, you know, partly because of the, the tariff that had been implemented after the first of the year. And I really resisted that and I called around to some city managers to get their input in this situation. And we could have said, "No, absolutely not", but some of them basically said that you negotiate with them and, and do something that is fair and equitable, you know, because of the fact they don't have any control over that cost. And there's nobody said that, "No, you, or just give it to them". And I did, and I didn't. And they, we've probably been talking about it for three or four months now and I've just kind of put them off, put them off, put them off. And then I had a meeting with them and with KSA and Gerald and then I had a meeting with KSA and we kind of, they, KSA looked at their requests very, very closely and which were justified and, you know, and so that's why, you know, we decided to recommend basically the, the thirty thousand dollars for that initial change order that they've been asking for. And then the seven thousand dollars, seventy-eight hundred dollars one is, whenever you're doing a project that is a reconstruction, basically, you come across stuff that is unpredictable and so that's what that's for.
And the bid was significantly under our construction budget that we had for our Texas Water Development Board, Clean Water State Revolving Fund loan, and so this is not money directly coming out of the city pockets.
So is this issue, is it joint ownership between us and the construction company? I see we're placing the blame, for lack of better word, choices on the tariffs, which I don't know that we could have predicted that, but... And I understand the underground hidden structures that have caused the cost, but are we, as a municipality, liable for that increase in cost because the contractor didn't plan for potential higher costs based on material?
Well, why, why was it so long through the Texas Water Development Board? Is that, is that normal? Or is this not part of the front-end documents?
Short-staffed. They had this just set on doc, desk at Texas Water Development Board for months without being touched.
So the escalation price, take tariffs out of the equation, escalation price, we consider is due to the Texas Deva, Texas Water Development Board dragging their feet or not getting to it in a timely manner. And it's not something that we could have put in the front-end documents to say, "Hey, plan on ninety days" because nobody knew this until they were short-staffed.
That's my opinion on that, too.
You know, and they could have, they could have said, when we asked them about holding their bid past the deadline set in the specs, they could have said, "No, you know, because we're getting close, we see this". They didn't. They said, "Yes, we'll honor those prices. We, you know, signed the contract". So legally, there, I don't know, Veronica, you could probably respond to this. Legally, I don't know that there's a requirement. Ethically, you know, I think that we're joint, we're in this project effort together and that's why we came up with the thirty instead of the fifty that they were requesting. I think that Free, KSA, you know, did go through their, their changes request in, in detail and they are justified. I mean, they have, they have, the, the amount that they originally requested is justified, but there's risk involved. You know that when you, when you bid on a project and, and time goes by, your costs can go up. Time goes by and costs go down, you don't really give that back to the...
Sure we do.
Just so I understand, it was outside of the bid win, of the project window, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
It was already outside of the project window by the time we...
When we, when we awarded the project, it was beyond the, the timeframe that they were legally obligated to hold their, hold their bids. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And y'all, y'all, y'all have done the forensic work and, and accounting for the adds and subtractions?
Okay. I, I have one, one more question. And I, I see we're attributing this to the slow-moving process of the Texas Water Development Board, correct?
Yes, sir.
Why didn't somebody ring the bell for help during that time where someone could have intervened possibly and got this moving faster?
We did. We actually did. I, we contacted our legislators. I think that as, as Councilwoman Esme may have helped, have intervention and it, it, and it may have helped, I don't know, because we did get it, but it was, it's still...
It usually does.
It still, it still took longer than, than we would have liked.
Okay. Any other, any other discussion on Agenda Item Thirteen? Does this get us to the finish line on this one, as far as change orders?
We're still over a year away, so I can't answer that directly.
Probably not, because this is, and that's part of the reason why I also delayed presenting this change order to council because they asked for it right up to begin with before we even got into it. Now, they've been really, really good to work with as far as that's concerned, helping us out in other areas as well. So, but there, since it's a, since it is a lot of rehab, there may be other things that we uncover that, like similar to the seventy-three or seventy-eight thousand...
Eight hundred.
Seventy-eight hundred that's part of this.
Project overall, Gerald, going pretty smooth?
Very happy with it, very happy with it.
Thank you.
If you, if you have a chance to go out there, they have some, it is amazing to see how much work is going on out there. They have some holes that are fifty feet deep?
Nah, thirty-five, forty.
Thirty-five, forty feet deep?
We could be, we have hit leg night, so we could be mining if we wanted to.
Okay, counsel, I'll entertain any action on Agenda Item Thirteen. I'll make a motion that we approve change...
I'll make a motion that we approve, change order number one, for an amount of thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-one cents to Cap Rock Construction.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? If no discussion, we'll vote. Vote, all in favor said motion, signify by raise your right hand, motion passes, agenda item number fourteen, consider taking any necessary action on a change order for the FM four eighty-seven sewer line. Gerald?
The sewer line re, movement and upgrade is a dual project. It is for enlarging parts of the system so that Cornerstone, it build out, will be able to utilize our sewer system all the way without any more, further modifications. And it's also to move the infrastructure out of the right of way for Tech Dot for the program. They had planned several years ago, that's now put off until March or April of twenty twenty-seven. But as we've done this, as we have everywhere in town, we found some things that we didn't anticipate. We have two lines that go under the FM four eighty-seven at Hamilton and Laura. And those lines are in really bad shape and they have to be replaced, the two manholes that are on that side of the road. We also found two manholes that we didn't know were there, they were about this deep under concrete and asphalt, had to be removed so that we could get the lines to the new manholes on the western side of the road. And, but we need to replace these two manholes that are in, they're old brick manholes and also to bore underneath the road to replace the pipe that's, that's there now. And I think the mayor is aware, and some of y'all may be, the, the manhole at Hamilton is a constant problem. And it's because the lines are broken underneath the highway.
So is, is this work to facilitate Cornerstone?
Part of it.
And the reason I ask that is, I was told that all utility upgrades associated with Cornerstone would be at their expense. That they were bearing the cost of utility upgrades.
I'll answer that if Tim wants me to.
Go ahead.
The original discussion and my understanding, when we started the project to do this, was that Cornerstone would be responsible for whatever portion of this cost was related to the upgrade for their, for their capacity. And it's my understanding that now they're saying they never made that agreement and.
We on video back there?
Yeah, so I, I will add to that. So there, there, as I understand, that was my understanding all along also, until probably six months ago or so. And it never made it into any of the agreements that the, the city approved.
They made the agreement, so I hope they don't come looking for anything in the future.
Well.
That, that's on camera.
So, but let me, let me, let me finish. So, in discussion with them, they are participating, they did agree, and I think it was thirty-six thousand, that they're contributing. That, basically, there was a way to look at it, whether it was the full cost of that infrastructure replacement or the percentage of the, of the flow, a percentage of the cost that they are bearing. So they are participating to a certain extent, and I don't remember, recall the number. But we did get them to agree to that portion, but it's not for the entire amount.
So is that.
And this, this particular change order is not really benefiting them. It is something that we'll, we uncovered when we were working on the project.
Yes, sir.
How did we get from where Councilman Perry says we had an agreement and then it's not in the paperwork? Is that, am I understanding correctly? How does that happen and how do we avoid that in the future?
Well, I, this is, I can't, I can't speak to how it happened, because it happened before I was here. But in talking with Andrea and Barbara BBW, they looked through the agreements and it's not in those agreements anywhere that I was able to find.
But who looks at the agreement before it's signed and submitted?
Well, the city manager reviews those agreements, the city attorney reviews the agreements and that, before they're presented to council for approval.
Verbally stood up and stated that.
So there was, I understand that there was discussion at council meetings in regard to those that are part of the negotiated terms, but they were not in the agreements themselves that were adopted.
Well, that's disappointing.
This forty-two thousand is in addition to the thirty-six that they are already agreeing to?
I'm sorry?
The thirty-six thousand that they're already agreeing to help with, or is that something separate?
I don't remember the number specifically.
Oh, I thought you said thirty-six thousand.
I talked to them about.
I don't think, the thirty-six thousand doesn't have anything to do with this.
Oh.
Thirty-six thousand dollars has to do with a percentage of the cost that would be attributed.
This particular one, gotcha.
To, I think it was, I think that was the cost of upsizing it, is that?
Well, they, they were supposed to participate in the cost for engineering and planning. And I believe if, and again, I was not part of the financial groups to say this with a hundred percent accuracy, but I believe they were billed for KPA work that was done on this at the very beginning. So that might be where the thirty-six thousand came from.
So, the way, and it was, the, the way that their share was calculated was intended to be, the percentage of flow through the pipe that is attributed to them, that was the percentage of the cost of the project that they were supposed to bear. And that number was significantly more than what we have arrived at, or what they've agreed to. What they've agreed to is the difference in, in cost. In other words, we are upsizing the pipe and so they're paying basically for the upside, the cost of upsizing the pipe from a six to eight, because they're, from their perspective, we were going to have to relocate it regardless because of Tech Dot mandates. Tech Dot is mandating that we move this pipe out of their way. We had this conversation, the contract was originally awarded. And, and so they're saying, because the city was going to have to do that, we could have built it at a smaller capacity, which wouldn't have helped them. And they're, they basically said, after the agreements were signed, yes, we will pay for the cost to upgrade, upsize the pipe.
Gerald, did I hear you say that this, we jumped to a lot of hoops to get all this stuff out tonight, now they pushed the project back two years?
Yes, when twenty twenty-one got contacted by Tech Dot, they wanted to know what our status was on removing the lines out of the right of way. And I didn't even know anything about it. And they said, you got to get it done, we're going forward with this at the end of the year. And it's been pushed back at least four times. And the last time I heard, about eight or ten months ago, it was going to be, the project was going to be let January of twenty twenty-six. And we hadn't heard anything from them, so I called them the other day and it's been pushed back till twenty twenty-seven now. So six years at least pushed back since we first heard about it.
Since they sent us on a wild goose chase, hurry, you know, get out of our way.
Exactly.
Counsel, any other discussion on this?
Where does this, you have, where does this come from?
This should come from the enterprise fund.
From the what, Tim, I'm sorry?
From the enterprise and CIP funds.
Gerald, the same question I had, does this get us to the end of this one?
Yes, sir.
Somebody else got to make a motion, I already spent a bunch of money tonight.
Well, that leads to a question, what if we don't take any action on this tonight?
Well, then, then these guys are going to finish the project and leave and we'll have to get somebody else to come bore under the road and put a new manhole in, in there. I'm sorry?
Not be like more expensive in the long run.
Yeah, let me ask, is it a possibility, instead of boring under the road, to dig the road when they, when they actually do this project?
No, they're only going to, what's it called? My mind just went blank. They're going to take off three or inches, I think, and then re.
Oh, that's just a mill?
Yes, mill.
Mill and resurface?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they're going to put curbs in too, by the way, I didn't know that until just this last week. But it's going to be a curbed li, uh, street all the way from city limits into town.
And is this a, is this a KSA front, administered project?
Yes, sir.
And, and y'all are good with the accounting on this one as well, I assume, whoever's.
We're good with the accounting of the sewer line portion of it, not the Tech Dot mill and resurface.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But how long are we saying for Tech Dot comes back through?
You know, if we don't do it today, we have to do it in a few months, we're going to have to spend this money regardless and water is just so important. So, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the change order in the amount of forty-two thousand on the project upgrade and replace sewer infrastructure along north of four eighty-seven.
A motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? If no discussion, we'll vote, all in favor said motion, signify by raise your right hand, motion passes, agenda item fifteen.
Thank you, Gerald.
Thanks, Gerald. Take any necessary action, approving an agreement for special assessment collection services with Tech Gov Solutions LLC in connection with the Cornerstone Pid, Public Improvement District. Tim?
So the, the Cornerstone Pid collections, the county appraisal district and, excuse me, the tax collector is unable to handle that again this year. For the last couple of years, P three has been handling it and they are no longer doing that, but they've recommended this company to handle that for us, to do the collections on the Pid. That money then is used to pay off the, the Pid debt. This, the cost of this is actually borne by the pit itself. So there's no, no cost to the city for this work, but we need to have this under contract to get that, to get that collected and fulfill the city's obligations in that regard.
So this is something that has, happens annually?
In the future, I, the intent is for the county to collect it and it would be part of our collections agreement with the county. Wouldn't be handled separately through a third party.
Is this something that the, the, the Mountain County Tax Office should be handling, they just don't have the capacity right now, is that?
I can't answer if it's their legal responsibility to do that, but normally they would, the appraisal, excuse me, the tax collector would handle this type of assessment collection with their, with the tax collections that they normally would do. So.
And so the cost is being borne by the Pid. Who, where does that cost come from?
The Pid assessment is paid by the residents, property owners within Cornerstone. Both the contractor who owns lots and the residents in there, they pay a pit assessment.
Right.
That pit assessment is collected and is used to pay off the debt that's issued against that Pid by the, by the, the Pid is Public Improvement District, so they issue bonds to help pay for infrastructure. And then they collect an assessment from just the residents within that Public Improvement District to pay those, those costs.
My, my question is, if we're collecting, the Pid's collecting to play off, to, to pay down the, the public utilities portion of it, if we're taking money out of that to pay an outside company, that's less it's paying down.
That's correct.
Right?
Yes.
This is something that the county, that we're already paying for and the county should be doing.
I don't know if there's.
Short staffed, that's one thing. If it's, if we're letting somebody else do it because it's no skin off of their back, well, it's skin off of our back.
And they should reimburse us if they're short staffed and can't do it.
Am I, am I out of line here?
Counsel would like to speak.
Mayor, council members, Veronica Rivera, Assistant City Attorney. In Pid cases, you would still need to enter into an agreement with the county in order for them to collect the assessments. It's not a tax as an assessment, but when an, when a resident sees it on their tax bill, they will more likely pay that because it's on the tax bill than by a separate tax statement or assessment statement. So at this time, as the city manager stating, you're ask, you're being asked to enter into an agreement so that another party can go ahead and collect those assessments rather than the county, because more than likely, there was a window that was missed sometimes with the county, where they just are not able to wrap it into the tax bill. But at another point in time, your city staff will come back with a contract with the county, but there will also be a fee. Again, the fees that are being paid, you are correct, they're coming out of the assessments and, but that's already also covered when the bonds were first issued. And P three actually can provide you more information, so if you'd like more information on that, they, they would be able to provide an additional explanation on how it's wrapped in there.
Has P three collected it up until this point, or did the county ever?
No, the county has never.
Never done it?
Collected it, so I think this is going to be, this, so far there's two years of Pid collections, I believe, on Cornerstone.
That's probably right.
And the first year was probably very minimal, because there was not very much development in that area. But this is the, I think, the third year. And P three has collected in the past, but they are not, they have declined to, to collect it this year. And I've actually, we've actually been asking since probably February for the county to take that over. And I just have not gotten any response from the assessor collector. And I, I talked to the judge about helping to intercede and that didn't pan out, although the assessor collector did hire a new, it's a firm to help them with their collections. They were using, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of the. They were, they changed companies just about a month and a half ago. I mean, I have talked to that company about this situation and they have assured me that they would have it in place for next year.
And what, what, in, in a situation like this, when it's on your tax, for your tax bill, you're right, it's more likely to get paid.
Right.
What happens when, if, does, if, if Ward owns a house out there and he decides, and this, whoever this company is, sends him a bill and he says, yeah, I'm not paying that, what happens there?
So that, that does happen and so that's why you need to go with a reputable firm. And I am familiar with this firm, it's used in other municipalities, they are used in other municipalities. Most of the time it is temporary, but a lot of times they use it for the life of the Pid. And so they would be doing the collections for you. So if, if, if someone misses the payment, which is due in January, then they will start sending out collection notices. But same thing, like you mentioned, it's like, I don't know who this is, I, I don't know any money, let me just set it aside. Automatically, when y'all voted on getting, on establishing the Pid and then when the bonds were issued, liens have been placed on all the lots. So whenever that lot is sold and there are assessments owed, at that time, that's when they will be paying them, it would be at closing.
And that would be the developer paying that, correct, when the lot is sold?
No, sir, if there's already a home build, the developer pays when it's just lots.
Right.
The property owner pays when they're in their home. So if the property owner does not pay those assessments, a lien would be placed on, the lien's already there. It's, it, it went along with the bond documents that y'all approved. And when that property owner sells it to another property owner.
That lien is enforced.
That lien is enforced and so that amount would come out at the time of.
And be distributed to the city.
At the, right, at, at, at the time of closing for that lot.
Yes, ma'am.
And then any type of collection costs or additional costs.
And does that, does that lien accumulate interest, penalties and interest?
It's up to the, it's up to who you contract with on what those penalties may be, but yes, they normally provide some type of penalty.
What is the life of this Pid, do you, does anybody know?
Thirty.
Normally, a, a Pid is normally thirty years.
It doesn't seem like we have another option if the county's not in here, we're going to have to.
But it's limited, so that if the. It is, but it's limited, so that if the bond gets paid off early, in other words, if it develops very quickly and it, and the bond gets paid off early, assessed values are higher than anticipated, um, then it would, and it got paid off early, it would end as soon as the debt's paid off. But a maximum of thirty years, I think.
Normally, I haven't looked at that one.
Sure.
Thank you. Counsel, any action on this Agenda Item? Agenda Item fifteen?
I move that we accept, um, staff's recommendation and approve the agreement and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement, uh, with Texas Gov Solutions LLC in connection with the Cornerstone Public Improvement District.
I'll second.
A motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? If no discussion, we'll vote, all in favor of said, motion signify, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Uh, at this time, we are going to convene in executive session pursuant to Sections five five one zero seven two, five five one zero eight seven, and five five one zero seven one of the Texas Government Code to deliberate about purchase, exchange, lease of value of real property for the purpose of commercial development for the city's six acres located at eleven sixty-six West Highway seventy-nine in Rockdale, two, deliberate about negotiations regarding the proposed interlocal agreement for land transferred to the city from the Rockdale Fair Association, and three, deliberate about and hear from, seek advice from legal counsel, witnesses related to the possible errors in the city's budget for twenty-five, twenty-six year budgeting process and/or account, accountancy actions related to previous budgets and/or current budgets. The time is now six fifty-seven PM. We are convening into executive session.
Thank you.
Okay, council, we are reconvening into open session, I have nine forty-nine PM. Is there any action coming out of closed session?
No action.
Counsel, is there any other, uh, business we need to attend to at this meeting?
No, sir.
Hearing none, this, uh, meeting is now effect, is adjourned at nine forty-nine.